The Hagan Sports Network, we're out here at the Cranberry Country Lodge in Toma, Tuesday, March 11th, for a two-part forum. First part of the forum, you'll see people running for city council in 2025. And the second part of the forum, you'll see people running for school board in 2025. That's what you'll see next, here on the Hagan Sports Network.
... with the pledge of allegiance, if you could please stand as your people. And remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At six o'clock, we drew lots for the positions here of the three candidates that are running for city council that appear tonight. Thank you to Robin Johnson, who will be moderating tonight's event. I'll give you a little background on how our format will go for the evening. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to provide opening remarks. Jeremy Hahn will be timing the event. And each candidate will have the opportunity to see how much time they have left here. Robin Johnson will hold up a little flag when it's 30 seconds left, 15 seconds left, five seconds left. Deb will ding if you run over her time. Then we'll start with our questions, and each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question. Mitch Cale drew slot number one, so as the first candidate selected, he will answer the first question first, and the second candidate will answer the second question first. We'll proceed in a round robin style until all questions have been answered. If the audience has questions, please raise your hand, and I'll come along and collect them. Questions must be appropriate for all candidates to answer, and not pointed at one candidate or political party in particular. Lastly, each candidate will have the opportunity to provide two minutes of closing remarks, and we'll do that in reverse order. So Alex is drawing the third seat, so he'll begin with closing remarks in reverse order. At this time, we'll go ahead and begin.
Good evening. Back house, are we out looking for our sunset? First after daylight saving time. Very glad to see you here tonight, thank you Tina. So we know the ground rules. First question to Mitch Cale. Excuse me. Opening remarks. You have two minutes.
Hello. Hello. All right, hello, thank you, I'm Mitch Cale, and thank you guys for coming in. Thank you to the Chamber and the Torrey for putting on this event. I'm just here to tell you that I am glad to continue to be on that city council to provide guidance to make our city a little bit better than what it is right now. There's always room for improvement, and you know, we got lots of things going on, trying to recover the roads and make our city as best as it can be. So, short and sweet, thank you.
Hello, my name is John Glynn. I ran, I was on the city council for two terms before, would like to go for another term. Thank you guys for having this forum, so people to ask us questions. I'm running unopposed, but I still wanted to hear what people had to say, any questions I have, because we've worked, I work for you, find out what people are interested in. So, anyone that doesn't know me, grew up in Chicago, moved to Toma in about 1985, met my wife, been married 39 years, two kids, three grandkids. And if you see something flying around town, that's me in the old light, or my son now. So, I've seen Toma from all angles, so. But I really appreciate the opportunity to help work with people. The reason I joined is because I enjoy Toma, I choose to live here, and I like it, like the people, and like to continue to help serve.
Good evening, my name is Alex Bass. I'm kind of chuffled there, John, because we're kind of the same situation. My wife and I moved here a couple of years ago. I'm in the military, so stationed at Fort McCoy as an instructor, active duty. We, same thing, we fell in love with Toma, we absolutely love this place. Our kids go to school here, we go to church here, we do all the Toma hockey, Toma soccer, all the activities. We have four boys. If you see us walking up and down Superior, that's us out just trying to get some energy out of four little boys. Same thing, I just, if you can't tell I'm in the military, I choose to serve. And I want to serve Toma, I want to try to make this place as best as possible as I can for all the kids as they grow up, and all the challenges that they will face in life. And as a community, work on that, and do a great job to help these kids, and all the kids in Toma, so.
Thank you, Alex, and John, and Mitch. I'm gonna try one thing here. Crooked neck if I can bring this up. There we go. All right. First question tonight. We have six, divided by three. Six questions, and if we may have more from those attending, you can submit those to Deb or Tina. Question number one goes to you Mitch. How would you describe your leadership style?
So, my leadership style is, oh, I own a couple businesses, and I run them as I put people in places that I trust. When I put those people in places that I trust, you have a pretty well-oiled machine. I think we can put that in the same as into the city. We put people in the positions that we trust, and we give them value and put them in there to do a job that we can all be proud of. And trust is a big thing, and it comes to, I mean, people in positions, especially in the city, and especially in my business as well.
Still got time. John, if you like, you're next. How would you describe your leadership style?
My leadership style is, first, listen, and make sure we have a goal set, and then empower the people that you work with to help achieve the goal. So, you don't have to be the smartest person in the room, but if you're a good listener, and you surround yourself with good people, good things can happen. So, I think it's pretty simple. Listen, and do.
Thank you. Alex?
So, it's always, leadership style is always a really interesting topic. The phrase now that's going around is called servant leadership, and it's a big thing that we hit on, and it's exactly what it sounds like. I'm in a leadership position, but I want to serve whoever I'm entrusted to, right? So, the city of Toma, I want to serve Toma as a leader, and focus on what your issues and concerns are. It may or may not always match up with what I think is important, but if it's important to you as a community, then if elected, it's important to me. And I will do what I can to influence that decision and policies that will better serve our community. Because same as John said, we're all here, right? We all live in Toma, we love Toma, so why not do what we can to make it better?
Thank you. Again, we have 90 seconds for your responses to these questions, but this is question number two, and John, I believe you are the lead to answer. Now we're gonna get into the nitty-gritty. What is your opinion on the senior executive team replacing a city administrative position, and how do you foresee working with the team? Would you like me to repeat the question? Give it to me to ask.
No, I've heard this question quite often, because I ask people what they think about it. So, we spend a lot of time explaining it. So, the reason it exists, we had a senior executive team, is because we had a problem trying to maintain city administrators. So, we had three city administrators that are no longer around. So, not against the idea of a city administrator, we just have to relook at the job description, figure out how we're gonna pay for it. But with the senior executive team, it's made up of chairman of different departments that stepped up above again to actually help fill that gap. Now, it's not perfect, there's problems sometimes. Looking just managing any business with like, a team, without one person accountable, creates difficulties. Long-term, I think it might be a good idea to have a city administrator, but in the meantime, it was a more cost-effective way to try and help. The people on that team made up the team. They're the people that a new business would talk to, and that's how we derive it. So, I would say, I have no problem with working with anybody that's on the team now, because we do it frequently, but in the future, if it was determined to have a different structure, I'd be okay with that, but it has to be a plan.
Kind of hits on what John said earlier. I think a team versus with a single point, there's benefits to both. If you have a team, everyone brings their own expertise, their points of view, to whatever the issue is. The downside to that is the accountability factor. You know, if there's a team making decisions, lose the lead of the team, and trying to hold that one person or two people accountable versus a city administrator, you have that single point, right? They, but at the same time, the expertise that goes into it, was the question. And when I asked this question earlier, I brought the same thought, the same point John brought up, and that is, how are we gonna pay for this? A lot of things are already expensive throughout Toma, and if you add another position, or where's the funding gonna come from? That's always my big question, moment I see something, whether it's any of the bond proposals or anything that's going on, and see my first question was, who's paying for it? How are we paying for it? And what can we do to alleviate some of this? So, if there's a team in place, I will work with the team, support the team. If the decision is that there's a city administrator, I guess there's issues, kind of try to retain one. We'll look to see what's going on, and why we can't retain one personally, go from there.
Thank you, Alex. We had a few more citizens come in, so I'm gonna repeat the question for you Mitch. What is your opinion on the senior executive team replacing a city administrative position, and how do you foresee working with the team?
So, I was on city council, John here, when we did, you know, lost our current city administrator, and we opted out to make this set team work out. I think in the right, right space, this could be a benefit, having multiple people in that type of lead. But I would also say that with the current structure of the city government, our government's already kind of set out like that with department heads and department head meetings. I personally would like to see, you know, the one person that is kind of the ringleader, and with that city administrative position, or city, city administrator position. With the city administrator, I think it has a lot of benefits to having that one person to the face of the community, and I think our community as a whole, I shouldn't say as a whole, but as a, well, I've heard more people say that than city administrators than that we need. And I would say, I would agree with that, just based on that one person that can control the circus and the monkeys, and be that ringleader for us, so.
Thank you. Question number three, Alex, you'll get the first crack at it. What are your thoughts on how to increase the options for public transportation? Your thoughts on how to increase the options for public transportation in Toma? 90 seconds.
Wow. Increasing public transportation. I haven't heard that one come up, but I can see the issue. My first thought is the public safety. Where I live, trying to get onto Superior, looking at the traffic and how it flows, is very difficult sometimes to turn off on our street, onto Superior. So, my first question would be, how can we make it safe for everyone? You know, there's kids running around the library, doing the parks, and all the things. And what, what would the cost look like? I know there's all kinds of, there's the Toma shuttle that goes around, but to get from, you know, the south side of Toma to the train station, how, how do we do that? Bus system, where would it go? And then, of course, the big, big question, what's it gonna cost? Who's gonna provide the cost? Is it gonna be offset by the funds, and how expensive is it gonna be? A lot of folks in Toma are on fixed incomes, and it would be concerning, they want to use the public transportation, get out in the community more. I support that, but I also don't want them breaking the bank trying to get there.
Thank you. I think we hand it down to Mitch, and come back to you.
Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
What are your thoughts on how to increase the options for public transportation?
I guess the thoughts that I have on public transportation is, I know that there's a need for better reliability when it comes to different taxi service, and we do have the scenic bus that transports between Toma and McCross, which is a great asset for our community. But for our local community, I believe that having some type of incentive, or maybe another privatized taxi cab service to start up, or somebody that, could definitely help the situation, because I do know that there's, I get, I hear a lot about complaints about our Toma Transit not giving to people enough time, and they call in for a ride, and it's an hour or four hours later, and that's unacceptable in my opinion. So, looking at better ways to manage our public transportation, or added value on a additional service being brought back to Toma like it used to be.
Thank you. John, if you'd like the question repeated, I can do it.
I'm good. Pretty familiar with this question as well, because it's one of the most popular things people have called me about. And I've stopped and asked people when they're waiting at the grocery store, and how long they've been waiting here. I've actually taken the Toma Transit. So, it's not a taxi service, a lot of people don't understand that. It's actually public transportation for, it's very low cost, and it's, it's a state-funded thing, that we have to follow their guidelines and report. It's actually very expensive for the city. If you look through the budget, in the city budget, it costs a lot to operate it. Not saying we get rid of it, because some people need it, and it can take people in a wheelchair, and it works good for people if you know you have a doctor's appointment tomorrow, or if you know you can pre-plan the trip, it works better. But if you're somewhere and you're calling for a ride, you know, good luck, it's way too long. So, I would love to see something like another taxi to be a taxi service, or Uber, or anything we can do along those lines, because it's, it's not very, it's not a good for public transportation, for if you need a quick ride to go somewhere, it's not planned, so.
Thank you. Question number four, and we're gonna lead off with Mitch again. How do you feel the city should be encouraging new business and economic development in the city?
It's a good question. So, when it comes to new businesses and economic development in our city, I think it's important that we do offer tax incentives for small business owners to create those new type of businesses, and opportunities for our community. I do know we have, right now, a downtown realization program set in, or set in place that people that are downtown, that want to open a business, or have a building downtown could, to take, benefit for that, and that we're getting some good response from that. And I think having more programs like that would help assist that. I think that there's some empty spots in our downtown, and other empty lots around our community that definitely could see for more business, and more business means more people, and more people means more taxes, and more taxes means better roads. So, we could really probably use those more people in this community, and that will help, help everyone in the long run. So, again, more, I guess, tax incentives on either building a location, or taking a, a blighted, or a building that's not, may not be the prettiest one, and making it prettier again, and incentivize that for us to get our downtown looking better and better.
Thank you. John, would you like me to repeat it? All right.
I'm good. So, for economic development, we've done some studies, and one of the, you talked to a lot of the business owners in town, one of the big problems is workers, and one of the problems with having workers is affordable housing. So, in a roundabout way, if you have affordable housing, it offers people, workers, to help support the businesses. And that helps support the existing businesses as well as new businesses. If a large business wanted to come to town, and they said, hey, we're gonna hire 500 people, I think most of the businesses in town would. I mean, it's good news, but it's also scary news, because where are they gonna get the people? It's sometimes hard to get people. So, and where are they gonna live? So, and as, if people live farther away, sometimes they'll even work for less money if they don't have to drive all the way to Toma. So, affordable housing, close by is a big thing, so if we can, and I know the city's working on that right now, you know, so hopefully we can do things with incentives, or work with developers. And we have to ask businesses when they come. You have to be available when they come, and then ask them, what do you need? What's gonna make your business work good here, or what can we do to help you? And, but I do know one of the answers, one of the questions is gonna be people. Where could they live, and where could they work? So, we gotta have affordable housing.
Thank you. Alex?
Thank you. I hate to sound like I might go in here, but I would follow the same things, tax incentives, and I would add communication. Toma sits at a wonderful crossroads of two major highways, and trying to get the word out to businesses that Toma is, they, not new here, Toma's been around for a while, but we're developing, and we want more business. But then to John's point, you know, where are they gonna go? I've seen a lot of homes around the area still sitting on the market for a year or more, because it goes to affordable housing, a lot of folks can't afford a place to live, and then rent's going up with all the taxes going up, and it's just a snowball effect. So, trying to bring down the cost of living for everyone, and then incentivizing businesses to come, that we have places for their workers to be, and if we don't have the workers here already, and then incentivizing businesses, but they don't know about it. They don't know about Toma, we don't talk about Toma.
Thank you. We've got four questions down, two remaining. Just a reminder to anybody here, if you have a question you haven't heard, and they still submitted to you, Tina, and then we'll...
Same rules apply, it has to be appropriate for each candidate.
Appropriate for each candidate, okay. So, question number five, John. How can we become more efficient as a city government? 90 seconds.
More efficient? Well, I guess we have to just make sure we empower the department heads to get their jobs done. I know one thing that really helps is, personally, when you come to these city council meetings, there's usually about 150-page packet that comes with each one. So, I read it twice. You read it twice, so when you're in the meeting, you're listening to the people that come to speak to the city council, and you're listening to the other council people, so they can make sure, you can hear what their constituents are concerned with. And that way, when you come to meetings, more things happen. They get done quicker, more efficiently, and we want to get input from all the people, so to make sure we're doing what needs, what the city needs to be done, so.
Back to Alex.
I would say the same thing, trust and empowerment. We gotta trust the department heads that they're making the right decisions to serve the community better, and then, if not, empowering them to make good decisions and the right decisions. We've seen lately in the news, government gets a little loaded, and trying to just trim, if there's any, I'm not saying that there is, I'm not trying to fault anything, but just, you know, taking a look internally at ourselves, and seeing if there's places that we can improve also within Toma city government, and then trusting and empowering outside entities, and working forward from there.
Thank you. And we had a newcomer to the room, so I'll repeat the question for Mitch as it gets watered down. Here we go. How can we become more efficient as a city government?
You know, I, as, when you sit on city council, you know, you're responsible for this large budget, and this budget, you know, we want to make the best out of all our dollars that we have, and when it comes to making roads better, incentives for small businesses, businesses to start up, creating incentives, you know, it gets stretched pretty thin, pretty quickly. And I think everything that comes to our desk and city council, you need to look at and say, does this, does this have value? Do we get the value out of this program, or this, this money that we're spending on, whatever it can be? If it's a, if it's a study, or if it's a tax benefit over here, or whatever it could be, does this, will we reap the benefit of spending this money? And when we make that decision, we gotta make a decision for the best of each thing, and then additionally having our leadership on the department heads, you know, taking the purse terms a little bit, and get this, so that we are not spending so much money, you know? I think everyone in the room would like lower taxes, I know I would like to lower taxes, and, you know, that, the only way that we do that is to watch our spending, get more tax revenue, revenue, and have a bigger, bigger bank to spend on, and less things to spend money on. And by keeping an eye on what we're spending our money on, that could definitely help our situation as well.
Thank you. Pass the microphone down to Alex. For our sixth and final question that the Chamber came up with, I see Tina's been going through, I don't know if we have any more after this, but Alex, you get first crack at this. How do you plan to foster good working relationships between the city staff and the council?
Relationships is my big thing, that's all I've done in the military for 18 years, is work on relationships, whether it's within different military departments, or with other nations. It's, communication is always the number one thing, communicating with everyone, and building trust, building, building relations with them, just getting to know people. And it kind of goes back to that mutual trust, we have to trust each other that we're gonna do our jobs correctly, and we're going to serve the community correctly. And if not, then we talk about where can we get improvement. If it's a me issue, then I have to look internally and figure out what's, you know, something wrong with me, and it's me, I can fix it. And if not, we talk about it, and that's where all goes back, communication. I think that's, if you've been married for one year or 50 years, you know that if you don't have communication, you don't have a good relationship. So, communicate with each other, work together.
Thank you. Sorry, John, you did the last.
So, you know, relationships are based on, on trust and communication, and I think if we trust the people that are in the position, we have a better chance there to bridge that, that relationship with our, our employees that work for the city, and then communication, you know, ask their opinions on things. I think if, if we're looking at doing something, you know, and it's gonna affect employees, why not ask their opinion on it? If, you know, they are the ones there day to day, you know, as a councilman, you're not, or councilwoman, you're not there every day, and you, you know, you definitely see the things irritate people, you get to hear about things, and then you have to dig down into that, but, you know, communication on the aspect of, of, you know, will this better the city on issues that come up through, through, you know, making our, not only our city council, our city employees, and our city in general better, and keeping that open, live communication where people feel comfortable reaching out, or vice versa, so.
Thank you Mitch, go ahead, John.
So, one thing I can personally work on doing to better job, we have a, helping with the relationships, is you have to give the people the respect in their positions and empower them to do the job, but we really do a poor job to get them off the good news of what they do accomplish. There's a lot of big accomplishments. We talked about like, what do we do to help make the government more, our city more efficient? You know, there's department heads that have trimmed hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the budget, by making smart choices, and doing things differently, and they actually leveled the workload, and give an example, like they, there's someone that retired at the Parks Department, they used to plow the parks in the winter time, but now the Street Department plows that, and they replaced it with a couple part-time people in the summer to do the mowing, and they just sort of leveled the workload out amongst the equipment and the staff in the city. It came up to some big savings, and it's because we asked the department heads to dig deep and see what they can do, and they came up with it. So, you just have to empower them to do the job, but we have to do a better job to give them credit for when we do that, because there's no better way, I mean, if the public would know the good things that happened, always the government knows, here's the bad stuff. But there's some good stuff that's going on, so we have to do a better job of getting that up, so.
Alex, you began this one, didn't you?
Yes.
I thought so. I commend you three, we didn't have one late ringing bell with any answer. Jeremy, does that bell work? Jeremy, does that bell work?
It does.
Could you prove it? All right. We do have one question submitted from those attending, and this is it. What are your thoughts on the Toma area school districts asking the city to annex land for the new building? Or for a new building? It's not the referendum, it's the annexing land for a new building. What are your thoughts? Alex, you've got it in your hand, you might as well, oh, pressure.
Is this in relation to, um, the, I know there's a referendum that was in November, is this talking about the next purchase of the...
The annexing of the land to potentially build a new school, and we'll probably really get this in the next forum.
So annexing land means bringing it into the city limits?
How did that referendum go, I forget?
The referendum did not pass.
It didn't pass.
Okay, ask me, you don't address the candidates directly.
I did, I was asking you.
And I would have had to have help and answer.
Um, so I think zoning, I know this was a big one, I've seen a lot of comments about the school district, um, and the school board on this one. The zoning of it, and then annexing the land to get it is probably more cost effective than going out and purchasing it, 'cause again, where's that money come from? The referendum failed, and I, for one, was happy to see that, especially as everything increased January first, um, as far as taxes and evaluations and everything. So I would be for annexing the land, but I have to see where it comes from and how we're doing that. Is it eminent domain, taking it from a farmer? Where is that coming from exactly? I'm not sure, I'm not pretty to that information of what part of land would be annexed. Um, but trying to see and understand where it's coming from. How it's going to be used, I get it, building a new school, but I also think improving the schools we have right now, but that's not, I don't wanna get born into the school board stuff. Um, but, yeah, sorry, Thursday, just seeing what's more cost effective. It all comes down to saving the money for the city.
Thank you, sorry. Yeah, uh, Mitch, too.
So, uh, a good community foundation is always our school district, and, you know, I think I've always been a good supporter of the school district, uh, was on the board for, um, a couple of years there for one term. And, you know, very difficult decision on building a new school is, is a decision that the school board has to make, and honestly, we had a referendum that didn't go on, but when it comes to the land annex, you know, annexation into the city, I think it's important for our city to grow, and that city grows as we get more land. Um, and I, I think, uh, I don't see any reasons to not annex the land, but I'm not here to discuss the purchasing of land or, or building a new school, 'cause that's frankly not my decision. But, uh, annexing land is not something that I, I see that issue with.
John?
Well, this is a good controversial topic. So, so, I'm actually on the planning commission, so I already voted, and I'll let you know why I voted away. I did vote against annexing the land. So it was a couple million dollar purchase, which is a lot of money, but I, and I am all for education in schools, but when I went around to get my signatures to get on the ballot, it was the number one thing people asked me about, why do you care about schools? And they go, I'm the city council. And I was almost like, well, thank God, it's, you know, it's not, it's not my choice, 'cause it's a difficult decision. So the, the referendum did not pass, so the people voted, they said they didn't like it, so I don't know what the, the rush to buy the property right now is. So I would think, in my eyes, it'd be nice if there was a plan, this is the new plan, the new referendum, this is where the land's gonna be, this is where the school's gonna be, this is how much it's gonna cost, but put some other things in there. We're gonna buss more, so the bussing, what are the differences in the bussing cost? What are the, even if it's estimated, what are the estimated, um, building operational costs for the new reduced facilities compared to the, because I like making cost-based decisions because I answer to the people at Toma, so that's what I, I prefer to go that way. So that's why I voted no, not against schools, just against the speed right after the referendum.
Thank you, John. That's it. Time for closing, closing remarks, and we'll begin with you, Alex, and then we'll go down to Mitch, back to John. Two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, once again, thank you to the Toma Rotary Club and Chamber of Commerce, I appreciate you all putting this event on, I appreciate everyone coming in today, this evening, I know probably getting off work and trying to make it out here, it's a little tough, but I appreciate how many people are here and showing that, you know, you care about the city of Toma just like, like we all do. I look forward to April first, hoping to get, uh, get the votes to serve you, our own city council.
Thank you guys as well for showing up, appreciate that, um, and Tina on the chamber and at the Rotary for putting this on. Um, you know, I, my goal, like, is, uh, since I've been on city council, uh, is to make our community better. And I know that takes a lot of effort from a lot of people, and, uh, it takes the whole community. And, um, you know, you know, we have to focus on affordable housing. Affordable housing is something that, um, we definitely don't have at this moment, and we need more of it. And, you know, uh, doing initiatives for developers can definitely be a thing that we can, um, do here soon, where maybe we can get some more affordable housing for our community. Um, you know, and the more community we have, you know, we can maybe get some tax, um, great stuff on this eventually, I know that my taxes went up a lot, and I was like, ouch, but, uh, you know, and a transparent leadership in, in our, our city government, I think, is key. Um, you know, like John said earlier, we work for you, and when it comes to working for you guys, we wanna do the best for you. And when that decision comes across our, our desk for, um, whatever it could be, if it's new light poles, or if it's a tax incentive, my thought is, is this gonna benefit the majority of our community? And when it doesn't, then I'm really questioning what we are doing. Is it, if it benefits the majority of our community, then it, I think we can probably take care of that. Um, you know, me as myself, I continue to invest in this community, I want our community to do the best that it can be, and, uh, continuing investments from people that are in our community is what we need. And the more people that keep investing in our community, the better we can make this community, and that's where I see that we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina, the chamber, and the Rotary for having, having us here. Um, look forward to the next election, you know, and I appreciate anyone that supports me doing the city council, and I wanna make sure people know that, um, come to the meetings, you know, come to the meetings, of the agenda and the packets for the agenda, the same information that I'm looking at is available on the website, so check it out, look at it, and if you have questions or opinions, my email's on there too, and I guarantee you I will listen, because we work for you. So, um, it's great opportunity, it's a great privilege to be able to help try and make the, the city better, and it's a, it's a city I love, I live here by choice, you know, and I really appreciate, um, the town. There's, there is a lot of stuff to do, there's a lot of things, and the reason I joined the city council in the first place is, and I stayed on it, is because I was shocked. If you look at like the senior center, oh my gosh, there's tons of stuff going on there. And then we have the new Playstation going on, you know, there's lots of good stuff there. There's all the different, you know, park facilities, there's a lot of stuff going on that's a positive way, we have the Great Lake and everything, so, um, there's, and there's a huge hockey game in, in town, it's gonna be the playoff game, the last one that, uh, the home ring on Friday night for the Woodsman Hockey Game, so, so a lot of good things going on, I'm privileged to be part of the community, and I wanna help represent what your wishes are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, and also thank you for stepping up. Turn the microphone over to Tina and your guest.
We're gonna take a moment here to, um, let these guys come off. Any school board candidates that are here can approach the front of the room, and we'll draw four seats. All right, folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our second round, we just completed the city council candidate form, and now we're going to hear from the school board candidates that are with us this evening. Um, I apologize if this is a bit repetitive for those of you that were in the room from the get-go here, but I'm just going to kind of go through the protocol for tonight's event. Each candidate is drawn and numbered for their seat arrangement. Robin John will be moderating the event. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to provide opening remarks. Jeremy Hahn will be timing the, keeping time of the responses, and Linda Johnson will give our candidates an indication of when your time is narrowing down. Robin will then begin the questions, and each candidate will have ninety seconds to answer each question. The first candidate will answer the first question first, and the second candidate will answer the second question first. We'll proceed in a round robin style, and then until all questions have been answered. If the audience has questions that's appropriate for the school board, please raise your hand, and I'll come around and collect them. Questions must be appropriate for all candidates to answer, and not pointed at one candidate or political party in particular. Lastly, each candidate will have up to two minutes to provide closing remarks, and we'll do that in reverse order, starting with James, Heidi, and Dan. Uh, thank you for Toma Rotary for co-hosting this with us, and thank you for taking time to be here tonight.
Thank you, Tina. So Daniel, you are number one, first question, followed by Heidi, James, thank you for being here. Are we ready? We've got a list of eight questions, and we may get some more. Number one, Daniel, what motivates you to... Oh, excuse me, no, we need our opening remarks here, don't we? And you get two minutes for that. The real important questions, you only get ninety seconds. No kidding. So, yeah, two minutes, Daniel, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dan Creo, and I'm a lifelong Toma resident. Um, I am a telephone engineer, um, I went to WITC Rice Lake, here got my, uh, associate degree, and I've been employed as a, as a telephone engineer for the past twenty years. Uh, I'm married to, uh, my wife, who's a 4K teacher at La Grange. Uh, we have three kids, um, high school, sixteen-year-old, uh, middle school, thirteen-year-old son, and our daughter is in, uh, La Grange Elementary. Uh, no, wait, yes, La Grange Elementary, yes. Um, so, I appreciate the, the Toma Rotary and the board for hosting this. Um, as I get into this candidacy, um, my reasons are evolving, it's, uh, getting to hear from people and, and hearing questions and concerns, and when I decided to run, I did not think of, uh, doing this, 'cause this is quite out of my comfort zone, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Heidi, two minutes.
Hi, my name is Heidi Harris. Um, I wanna thank the Rotary Club as well as the Toma Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event tonight. Um, I'm actually not supposed to be sitting in front of you guys right now. Um, I was kind of dealt a bad hand right away from the beginning in life. My mom, at the age of six months old, left to go and join the army. By the age of five, I was living with my grandmother here in Toma, and she ended up having a heart attack in front of me right as I had entered into elementary school. By the age of six, I was put on Ritalin at Lenawire Elementary School, and was forced to go down to the office every day to make sure that I took the medicine, had my mouth checked. This deemed a problem before I even entered into a classroom. By the age of twelve, my sister went off to go to college, leaving me home alone five nights a week as my dad worked overnights in La Crosse. By high school, I was grades behind the rest of my classmates, a zombie compared to the rest of them, holding so many secrets inside that I couldn't even contain. At the age of seventeen, in August of two thousand and one, I was standing outside of recruiters' offices, begging them to take me, because I knew I was going to be a statistic. I didn't think I had a chance of even making it any further in life. September eleventh happened the very next month, and on September twelfth, I entered into that school, the Toma High School, furious. It took one teacher to change my entire course of my life, and pushed me further than I've ever been pushed before, and that's why I'm running for school board today.
Thank you. James Newlin, two minutes.
All right, thank you, everyone, for taking the time on your day to come listen to us talk about important issues with our school district. Um, I've already served my first, uh, term, I had three years, um, and it, you know, there's been a lot of rewarding things that come along with that, but I think just to take a step back so you'll know a little bit more about me, uh, serving in the fire in the service for a little over twenty years. Along with that, I've got six kids, uh, three of them are graduated, and three are currently in our school district. Uh, two, uh, one is a sophomore, one's a freshman, and one is in seventh grade. Uh, my wife and I are very invested in what we do in this community, uh, we are from Camp Levis, we commute every day, lots of back and forth, uh, trying to get our kids to sporting events, uh, being actively involved, volunteering. And so why do I say that? It's 'cause we do have an invested, invested interest. I have an invested interest in our kids, and not just my own, yours as well, and even the grandparents. Um, obviously with, you know, this election coming up, there's a lot of things that are out there with questions about this or that, but I think at the end of the day, um, everybody that's in here has an interest in our kids, has an interest in our community, and I think as candidates, it's our responsibility to do that in the correct way that we can express our message, but then you as parents make some really good decisions that, um, are gonna impact our community for, for the next three years.
Thank you, James. I have a feeling we're gonna have people come in periodically, you haven't missed anything yet, except the opening remarks. We have eight questions here, each candidate has ninety seconds to answer. Daniel, because you drew the lucky number, you begin the first question. What motivates you to become a school board member?
Uh, like I said in my intro, the, when I, when I first decided to run, it was, I decided, I told my wife that night that I told everybody that I was gonna run, and I, I didn't know this stuff, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a political person, but I am a father, I am a husband to an engineer, um, I, my sister. I'm a proud Toma resident, I'm proud of our community, I, I want the best for it. And, and I see issues, and I've been sitting back and observing, and I have some ideas on how to make it better, and if I can do that, I'll gladly do that and sit in front of you all tonight to get there. I'm just, I'm just a guy running for school board, I have no agenda, I, I started off as one of five, right now where I'm one of four, hoping to get to one of two, so that I can be one of seven. Um, I'm, you know, all the things that I am when I'm on the school board, I'm just a guy, one of seven people, so that's, you know, I, I think there needs to be people that look at things from different angles, and, and, uh, and I have five seconds, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Heidi. What motivates you to want to become a school board member?
I think my motivation was actually the hundred and twenty-seven million dollar referendum. I live in the Lenawire neighborhood, and once I saw that that school was going to close down, it propelled me to want to get involved. I'm one of two people that I know of that went to all of the community referendum meetings, um, and that decision, I knew was going to greatly impact not only the Lenawire neighborhood, but the entire community. And I wanted to make sure that that is the right decision for the community. Our candidates I talked about before, our community isn't, isn't economically strong at this point, but it can be, and I think that it starts with the foundation of schools. Hence the reason why I wanted to be involved.
Thank you. James, wanna repeat it?
Sure.
What motivates you to become a school board member, besides having six kids? What motivates you to become a school board member besides having six kids?
Yeah, six kids, that's a lot of work, but a lot of the reason that I want to run for a school board again is just that word, kids. It is so important when we talk about our kids, where they are right now and where are they going in the future? And when I sit back and look at that, you know, I look at what's going to be their opportunities for the future, what are they getting for education in the classroom? Do they have those fair and equal opportunities in the classroom to get educated, be involved in athletics, other activities that help us be more well-rounded as people? And so when I take a step back and just continue to look at why I'm here, there's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of work that has been done. You look at PBIS, we're starting to move the dial on that and what is that? We're looking at behaviors in the classroom, how is that impacting our teachers' ability to teach and how is that impacting our kids' ability to learn? And we've just finally started to turn that corner where we're getting data, we're looking at the write-ups, we're looking at the different things that are impacting us internally in our school district and with that, if we keep staying focused on what we're doing, we can make better than for our kids, but also for our staff as well.
Thank you. Heidi, you get the first crack at this question and then you'll come back to Jim and then I'll go down to Dan. How does a school board balance the need to provide quality education with the need to fiscally responsible, the need to be fiscally responsible to the local taxpayers? I'll repeat that. How does a school board balance the need to provide quality education with the need to be fiscally responsible to the local taxpayers? 90 seconds.
I feel the best way would be through complete transparency and community engagement. In order to have people want to invest in the schools, we need to be completely transparent and engage with the community as much as possible in order for those things to happen.
Pardon me? Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure. How does a school board balance the need to provide quality education with the need to be fiscally responsible to the local taxpayers?
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry about that. Being fiscally responsible to taxpayers and that's clearly identifying our priorities. Obviously our kids, curriculum, where we're putting our money to improve our education opportunities for our kids, that's the first thing. So when we come back and we're looking at the budget, what things are going to improve those opportunities for our kids? The other part is, is, you know, I know there's been a lot of discussion around buildings and what we're doing with that in the future and what is that? You all know that I served three years of a term. Those issues with those buildings were obvious even before that first term and we have a lot of work to do. Even if you're not in agreement with getting a new school or any of that type of stuff, we still have things that we have to do as a community to improve those buildings, to ensure that, you know, we don't have kids that are studying in all their classrooms. And I think that's pretty fiscally responsible to our taxpayers is that if they send a kid to school, that they're not in what I heard at the last meeting or so is that we worked out of a closet or had that meeting, a room that's built into a closet, is that what we want for our kids? So I think being fiscally responsible is doing the right thing and trying to look forward to the future of how we can properly spend that money to improve that opportunity for our kids.
Thank you. Dan, would you like the question? Repeat it?
No, I'm good. It's actually a really good question, but I don't know the answer to. I've got into the board, I've been attending the past five, six months of meetings. There's certain things that I wonder why they are the way that they are, why the decisions were made. I don't know all the reasons why the decisions were made, so I don't know what I would change. From my perspective is I trust people first and then, so knowing the people on the board, knowing the administrators, these are people that I trust and they're elected people, they're in positions for good reason and I generally want to trust them first until I find a reason not to. So I don't know what the answer is to that. I'd like to get involved and be part of that discussion to find out what can be done and what shouldn't be done and why.
Thank you. James? Many of the Toma area school district buildings are aged. What is your position in purchasing land to build a new school?
Might be a battery issue, I don't know. Keep shutting off. So obviously, everybody knows that there was a move forward on the land purchase that came from an annual meeting. One of the things that answered questions about is there was a lot of discussion around, that was part of the referendum. Well, there was the referendum that was sent out to our public to decide on at that time. Bringing a plan forward, here's our thoughts. We, like I mentioned earlier, we do have aging buildings, we do have some pretty significant repairs, there may be opportunities for consolidations with the schools to see how we can best provide that, being fiscally responsible. So the answer to the question is, we need to continue to work forward on what we're doing with our schools, what is in existence. So taking that approach which some of you have already attended meetings and you're already seeing that work that's being done, going back, reviewing every part of these buildings again and what are the major things? So my position is, is going to continue to look at that, develop the next plan, bring that forward back to the taxpayer, and let you guys decide, that could be an opportunity and maybe you don't see that right away. So the biggest thing is the community's got to decide in the end for those types of things.
Thank you. It goes down to Dan.
Can you repeat this question?
All right, Ken. Many of the Toma area school district buildings are aged. What is your position in purchasing land to build a new school?
With the last referendum I saw, you know, there was, there is a need, there is to be a building, there's not more land being created, what land we have is here. And when I think of, you know, going with my kids to different tournaments and seeing other school districts and I'm a mental visual person, so I imagine coming in on 16 and rounding the curve and having that land be a building and I look at it and go, that's actually pretty good land. For a school to be built, where else are we going to do it? And I have seen, I've heard rumblings of people saying, you know what, if the school doesn't buy it, I'll have my investment, we'll get together, we'll buy it. And then, you know, if they sit and wait on it, we're going to jack up the price and we're going to sell it to the school district for $6 million in 10 years. It's not, the price isn't going to go down. I look at it and go, you know what, I'm in favor of selling off some of the land that's not used to offset the purchase of this land. I think that's being fiscally responsible. But for a school to be built somewhere, that's pretty darn good property, 15 seconds. And so, I just, I think that it's a good location, I'm for it and quite honestly, it wasn't part of the referendum and the board that I trust purchased it, so.
Thank you. Heidi Harris, 90 seconds.
I'm against the purchase of the land. Until we pass an operational referendum to ensure that our teachers and our educators, staff members, et cetera, are compensated to top-tier pay, I don't think that the land purchase is a good idea. We need to be able to recruit from the smallest pool of teachers that is out there to get them to come and want to teach in Toma. A building is nice, I'm 100% agree that it may attract people, but the cost of that building isn't going to be able to put the money into the teacher's salaries that make the difference in the classroom.
Thank you Heidi. Yes, Daniel will have the first answer to this question. How do you view the relationship between the school board and the school district staff and how do you plan to foster good communication? I'll repeat that. How do you view the relationship between the school board and the school district staff and how do you plan to foster good communication? 90 seconds.
Yeah, that's a good question. So it was the week of, the last week of February, I, having friends as staff members, I was invited to come to the middle school, I wanted to be there, I had a full day planned with them, it was going to be an awesome day and then I thought out that that wasn't going to happen. I wanted to be there, I want to see what the teachers deal with, what it's like being in the environment, what kids are acting like today, I want to be involved, I want to, I want to listen to people when they tell me what to do, to raise the microphone. I, I'm friends with these people, these are people that I've lived my entire life with and, you know, we see each other at football games and wrestling tournaments and, you know, around that, you know, district events, these are people that I have relationships with and I want to continue doing that and serving them, but also serving the students. So I think, how would I, how would I be, how could I, what the relationship is like? For me personally, the relationship is good and I want to continue building that relationship and having that open, honest conversation of what can be done and, you know, how to best serve the teachers and the staff. There's some really good ideas being proposed and I'd like to look into it.
Thank you. Heidi, I sure can. How do you view the relationship between the school board and the school district staff? How do you plan to foster good communication? 90 seconds.
I believe that the role of the school board is to be the oversight of the school district. But along with that oversight position means that you need to listen to the staff members as well as the administration of the school, the recommendations and so forth, but the role of the school board member is to actively engage, listen and disconcern on what is doable and what's not. The school board holds the district accounting board and I think that's really important. Do I think that it should be a super friendly atmosphere or just hanging out and everything's great? No, because it's $44 million that the school district is playing with, you know, this is tax money that concerns all citizens and so forth. I believe that the teaching staff also has an vested interest in making sure that that money is spent wisely, just as much as it is for the school board. But it takes the school board listening to the staff members in order for that to come to fruition.
So I think our relationship is good, but there's still work to be done. There's always going to be work to be done with that. To the point of listening, if there's survey opportunities, taking that information, but also firsthand, there's a lot of things that we've accomplished that are good that's been shared. You go to the meeting, Board of Education meetings and you see the work that's being done in these schools and then you also, in conjunction with that, you also, things that are brought forward that are needed either in the classroom, wifi, broadband, those types of things, you look at that, the board stepping up and making some of those tough decisions and I think that's what's important from a board standpoint, you know? And is it perfect? No. And like I said, we're going to have to need to continue moving forward, but I'll give you an example. I recently have had, there's things brought up and there was one person that brought something up. It was a staff member that brought something up. I valued that one person. It's not about the, you know, having a big total, one person brings something forward, that should be just as important as if everybody brings it forward. So you've got to listen, you've got to hear, you get an opportunity to respond and properly appeal to the staff.
Thank you, James. Heidi, you get the first question or first answer to this next question. We have eight questions submitted, we've written or we've answered four of them, so if you haven't heard something that you're curious about or somebody listening wants to submit a question, Tina's here, so is Deborah, feel free to raise your hand and they'll come and see you. Question number five to Heidi. What is the public relations role of a school board and its members? Public relations role of a school board and its members, what is it?
Honestly, this one is a little harder to answer. I don't think that the school board should be the one touting the accomplishments or any of the criticisms that might be coming out of the school district. I think that's the school district's job, is to be the public relations. As for when the public comes for public comment and so forth at school board meetings, I believe that there should be not only engagement from the school board members acknowledging that public comment, but also providing an avenue to get questions, comments, concerns, actually taken care of. At this point right now, when you go to a school board meeting and it's a public comment, you just talk into a void. The school board does not acknowledge and then they continue to go on to the next person. It kind of leaves a lot of members in the public kind of sitting there wondering, is my question, comment, concern going to get resolved? And I feel like the school board should set up an avenue in order for that to be able to, 15 seconds, for that to be accomplished.
Thank you Heidi.
Just want to make sure I understand.
You bet. What is the public relations role of a school board and its members? Public relations role?
Well, first of all, we do, as a school board, we have to work for our community. Our role is to ensure that, you know, policies and procedures that are developed are called through, consistent and how does that impact our community? Well, that builds trust. When we talk about policy and procedure, that's one of the primary roles of a school board along with fiscal responsibility, so how we build the budgets out. I know that we're hearing comments about transparency and whatnot, books for the school board or public record. Anybody in this room can go down and request the full budget, that is all possible. The other thing is at a pub...
I don't want to change places though. I'll give you the mic.
Wow, never had a mic do that before. So I just repeat my thoughts there. Where was I?
Transparency.
Transparency, thank you. So with the transparency, you know, like I said, public record, it's available, at the meetings, they're published what we're talking about. There are some things that do go into closed session, but lots of times you see the votes that are happening with that. All the school board members are just like you, we're community people, we're community members, we're trying to do something good for our community, that's really the pillar of what we do around here. And so it's not that anybody's trying to do anything that's wrong, it's just that there's sometimes procedures that a school board has to follow and that could be for a lot of reasons that are not just related to building a school, it could be they're protecting somebody's integrity when you're having a discussion, well, something that's really important. So that's really where I think the school board lands.
Thank you Jeremy. Thank you James. Believe it goes down to Daniel, do you have an answer to this question?
What was the question here?
What is the public relations role of a school board and its members? Public relations role?
So public relations, it seems the people that have been supporting me have supported me knowing that I'm accessible, that I'm open, that I'll talk with anybody, that I'm at school events, that I can, you know, maybe quick casual conversation with somebody and explain the reason why the land was purchased when the referendum didn't pass. They were two separate things, it wasn't together, the vote no wasn't the land, things like that, where people appreciate the accessibility and being able to just ask a question of somebody that they know, like and trust and, you know, that's active in the community. and representing the district well. Um, and I think just being present is, is very valuable in itself, being around. You know, letting people see you, that, you know, you're outside of board meetings and you're thirty seconds. And, you know, I don't even need the thirty seconds. This is, it, it is. I, I think the public relations is just being who you are. We're normal people of the community. So be in the community and be of the community. I'm of the community here in Toma. I've lived here my entire life and I'm kinda living here until I die. Hopefully that's not very soon. Um, especially after the meeting. It'd be nice to go to the parking lot.
Thank you, Dan. Back down to James. Question number six, a little more personal. How would you describe your leadership style?
Well, um, I've been in multiple leadership roles throughout my life, even my career. Uh, one of the first things is, is being collaborative when we're having those types of discussions that might impact more than one person. But I can be very direct when I need to be, um, as far as my leadership goes. But the thing that I really do try to under, uh, do is seek to understand. So when somebody's saying something, just kinda like me repeating, can you repeat the question? I wanna make sure I understand where they're coming from and what, what it is specifically, what's the ask. And I think lots of times, uh, we don't do a good job of listening. And I know that myself, I've had to correct myself on that. I've had to take a step back and honestly, open up my ears and keep this closed, so that way that person can be heard. And I think through my leadership, I've been able to do that. I've had a lot of people from our community talking about different things, even, even staff at times. And the thing is, is my, my ears are open and I'm taking that stuff in. And then I handle it appropriately where, where I can take that information so something can either be discussed or even done, something done with it. So, you know, my leadership skills, the primary thing is being able to listen and then take that and do something with it if it's needed.
Thank you. Go down to Daniel. How would you describe your leadership style?
Awesome. Uh, yeah. My leadership style is, uh, if I want to do it myself, I won't ask anybody else to do it. I, I think people, um, you know, when I get involved, I, I do it, I, I do it with the best of intention. I try to round people up. Uh, I get energy from people being in this room, so I love when people show up. I love community engagement. I love when people have a say, when they're, you know, being seen and heard and valued and, um, you know, I work, I work remotely, you know, sometimes it's, it's hard to have a team building when I'm in Toma, Wisconsin, and the rest of my team is in Minneapolis and Madison. Uh, so a communication style will be then written or, um, making, letting people know that they're valued and appreciated and part of the team and that, you know, you know, we, we succeed or fail together and, you know, I'm really hoping that we succeed together rather than failing, because failing sucks. So, um, that is my leadership style, just being open.
Thank you.
This is my leadership style. Um, Katie Rice is actually here, who is another member, who is current school board member. Um, and I think that she should be able to join us up here at the table right now. We were told to come at seven. Um, I think because the other forum got done a little early, we did get started. And that's my type of leadership style, is making sure that I'm authentic, I'm vulnerable, um, and that everybody else also still gets a chance too. So if the other two candidates don't mind, I think Katie should be able to come up here.
Um, and I have clients until seven, so I tried to rush over here since I could. Um, my leadership style, uh, so I own three businesses, um, I have several employees. And I would say that my leadership style is open communication and collaboration. Um, I always tell my technicians to come to me when they have an issue and let's learn together. Um, I like to learn from them, just as much as hopefully I teach them. Um, I don't believe that being a leader is, you're always right. Um, there's a lot to learn in life, and I think we can learn a lot from those that we lead.
Thank you, Katie. We were onto the next question after that, and the microphone is in Daniel's hand. I don't know how we're gonna backtrack with some of these questions with Katie. I think it would be good to hear. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I can do a Facebook Live.
Well, I don't wanna put her on the spot for, you know, three ninety-second sessions for three questions. It's up to you.
I can do ninety seconds for all of the questions. What are they?
Really? Okay. Um, you're on the board. The number one question tonight was what motivates you to become a school board member?
So back in twenty twenty, we had the COVID pandemic. Um, there was, I have three kids in the school system. Um, and one of my kids, or two of my kids at the time, were in school and they wanted to mandate masking. Well, I did my own research and I didn't feel comfortable with my kids going to school with a mask. I didn't care if everyone else felt like their kids needed to be masked. That was fine. But I didn't wanna feel like mine, I was being forced for my kids to be masked. So I started a, uh, a group and, um, along with a good friend of mine. And we were able to fight it to the point where they, we were able to get choice. Um, you could mask if you wanted to, and you didn't have to if you didn't. Um, I realized then that the school board members, we needed common sense and we needed those on the school that weren't afraid to speak up and fight for what they believe. Next question.
All right. How does a school board balance the need to provide quality education with the need to be fiscally responsible to the local taxpayers?
Good question. So I don't think that they're independent of each other. Um, I think that the seven school board members that sit on the school board right now are, um, current people. And I think that if we put our brains together, that we can come up with good ideas on how to provide the best quality education with, um, with still staying within our budget. Um, I don't, I think that we spend money on things that don't need to be spent on. And the education needs to be the focus. And I'm a behavior analyst. That's what I do for a living. I think we need to be focusing on behavior and social emotional learning, um, because kids are not gonna learn if they don't feel safe in an environment. And that's something that I push every single school board in.
Thank you, Katie. Number three. Many of the Toma area school district buildings are aged. What is your position on purchasing land to build a new school?
Well, if you've been following the school board, you know my position on this. I think that that money could be used somewhere else where it's needed. That piece of land, after doing a lot of research and looking up the values and looking up state statutes, is way overpriced. Um, it is not worth two million dollars because it's currently zoned as agricultural. If they wanted the two million dollars, they should have done the study to have it zoned as being buildable before this even went through. I was against it.
How do you view the relationship between the school board and the school district staff? And how do you plan to foster good communication?
That's a good question. So I have a lot of teachers that will come to me. Um, like I said, I have kids in the school district. So I, uh, actually have a lot of teachers that will message me and ask if they, uh, can talk to me. I always lend a listening ear and I currently sit on the staff and teacher committees. And we have listening sessions where the staff and the teachers come and we listen to them and what their needs are. And then we take it back to the full board. And I'm a huge advocate of those sessions because teachers need to be heard. They are essential. They are the ones that are teaching our kids.
We'll get you caught up with this question. And then afterwards, you can hand the mic to Dan.
Okay.
What is the public relations role of the school board and its members? Public relations role.
if you know me, you know that I'm always open for a conversation. I will, I actually, not just teachers come to me, I have a lot of, the community members will message me and ask if they can call me or, um, and I will always listen to what they have to say. I'll listen to their concerns. And then I'll take it to the appropriate channel to be able to get those concerns met. And it doesn't matter what you believe or what your values are or anything. Um, I will listen, even if it's not something that I agree with all the time. I will do my best to mitigate the, um, conflict or whatever it is that they bring to me. So always an opening, open ear. And I think that that's essential for a school board member because we work for the taxpayers, um, not for the administration.
Thank you. We're caught up. Take a breath, take a drink. Daniel? We've got two questions left again, so if there's any, oh, I'm sorry, we have, this one submitted, okay. The current climate is seeing teachers switching districts frequently or leaving education altogether. Dan, what would you do to retain good educators? And I can repeat that. The current climate is seeing teachers switching districts frequently or leaving education altogether. What would you do to retain good educators? Ninety seconds.
So a lot of it, uh, with my wife as a teacher, we are asking her to teach us to do a lot. They're, they're, they're trying to keep their head above water and we keep handling rocks. And it's, you know, making it harder for them to stick around and be valued and heard. And a lot of it, I think, is that whether it's a feeling, whether it's fact, there seems to be a lack of appreciation felt. Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know. That's specific to each person on their own. But, you know, there needs to be, if it's not more pay, ask, ask them to do a little bit less or at least genuinely show them, like, not, not just in compliments, oh, I, I appreciate what you're doing. Really mean it, like, so that they feel it, that, that it's, that it's not just something that you say to somebody, you know, I, I, I know people who say the right words all the time. Um, I don't feel it. And if I'm not feeling it, it really doesn't matter if it's a well-crafted, I appreciate what you're doing. And that's, that's my take on it, is that I think that we just need to value the teachers for, for what they do. Um, you know, my wife, she'll, I mean, she spends the entire weekend sometimes away from the family till two o'clock in the morning. That's way different.
Thank you. Heidi, would you like me to repeat? Repeat the question or not?
Yes.
The current climate is seeing teachers switching districts frequently or leaving education altogether. What would you do to retain good educators? Ninety seconds.
I believe in order to retain good educators here in Toma, as well as attract them, again, we need to create a comprehensive operational referendum in order to compensate them. Um, the school district's pillars of excellence, um, by the goals of 2030, they have only the teachers being compensated at about three to five percent, or, yeah, between the top three to five schools in the district. That's not good enough. We have school choice in the state of Wisconsin. And just like parents choosing to take their kids elsewhere, we have teachers that are doing the same thing. They're going to go someplace else or they're going to get paid more money. It's a hop, skip, and a jump to lacrosse in order to get a higher paying salary. We need to pay the teachers now. There's a gigantic pool of administrators that is available out to hire at any point in time. But there's a very small pool of educators left in this country. And if we really want to attract and retain the best, we have to compensate them and pay them the best.
James?
So, primary focus with recruitment and retention, the first thing that always comes up is when we're looking at is pay. And it's across the board. That's the conversation we always have. Is it competitive? Um, and where are we at? Right now, we're trying to be competitive with the budget that we have. Is there more that we could do? Absolutely. Um, retention, how do you keep those people once they're here? Well, uh, we've, we've gotta provide a work environment for our teachers that they feel confident in. They feel like they're heard. But then most importantly, the behaviors in the classroom. Uh, no matter what pay you have, if your work environment is challenging, tough, it's hard to wanna stay, keep, keeping at what you're doing. So I think we have to continue, um, focusing on that, getting feedback from our teachers, others through surveys, uh, feedback like Katie talked with people approaching her, taking that information back and actually having some serious conversation about it. Our teachers do good, I shouldn't say good work, let's just say great work. It's hard. They're with our kids how often throughout the day, Monday through Friday. They're with our kids sometimes more than we are in the evening sometimes, just on most things. So we, I agree, we gotta continue to do more for our teachers. And that's only gonna be done through collaboration between the board, administration, and the staff. And if we continue to do that, we can keep those great teachers that we currently have.
Back to Katie Rice.
A short break.
Yeah.
Um, so my mom was a teacher, one of the best teachers I know. She taught me when I was younger. And she left the field because it was too much with behaviors. She wasn't getting paid enough. There was something I saw on Facebook the other day that, um, teachers are not paid to be therapists and nannies and all of the things. They're paid to teach, so let's let them teach. And that's the biggest thing, I think, when I sit in these listening sessions. Yeah, they wanna get paid for everything they do. And that's something that I have brought back to administration several times, um, after talking to several teachers. Um, but also, no matter how much you pay a person, if they hate their job because they're afraid of getting attacked by a student, or, um, they spend their whole time disciplining, then they're not gonna wanna teach. So that's where our focus should be, again, is on those behaviors and that social emotional learning to teach kids how to self-regulate so that we can help reduce these behaviors. And I honestly believe that if we do that, then we would be able to attract and obtain more teachers.
Thank you. We pass the microphone to Heidi now. This is our eighth question that was pre-planned, and I have two from our audience. And get to those. So Heidi, what is your role as a school board member to support a positive learning environment for the students of our school district? What is your role as a school board member to support a positive learning environment for the students of the Toma area school district?
I think the role would be, or my role would be, to celebrate the successes of our students. Um, I got into a little bit of hot water when I was doing this campaign. And it was because on the DPI report, it listed that we had zero students that completed an AP course. Now, if I was a parent and I was trying to move to this district, I'm gonna look at that DPI report card. And if I see zero that's on there, I don't wanna send my kid to this district, right? So after having a couple of different people in the community approach me, one who's sitting in here tonight, um, I did dig in. And I found out, like, we do have a lot of students that are in AP courses, a ton of them, um, as well as five hundred and fifty-two students who are dual-enrolled at WWT C. That's incredible. But I would never have known that information if I didn't dig for that information. If I didn't have to reach out to the principal of the high school to get that information, I would never have known it. Um, I think the board could do a better job of absolutely celebrating those successes. You hear the students come sometimes during the meetings and they talk about the different organizations and the different things that they're doing. But man, I, I wish the community could hear more of it too, you know? It's incredibly important.
Thank you, Heidi. What is your role as a school board member to support a positive learning environment for the students of our school district?
Well, I think the first thing is just taking a step back where we are right now with the temperature of this candidacy. Looking how we act, um, all the time, being good leaders. And what I mean by that, uh, we, we've got to take on a collaborative approach as a community. Um, although we might disagree on some things, as a school board, your job is, one, to listen and then also enforce those, you know, those policies, good policies, and then support our administration, support our staff, support our, support staff. But if we are not being collaborative on that, we're not listening to each other and as a community, we're going back and forth on things, that's, that makes it hard. So I think, you know, as a school board, it's going to be, it is our responsibility to ensure that we are working with all of our partners, but also with all the staff and administration that's involved in this. And I think too often, um, we get lost in the weeds on some of the other things that, you know, they are important, but the most important piece is making sure that we're accomplishing what we're here for and that's ensure that our kids get a quality education. And, you know, the way we're going to do that is working together. And, and it's okay when things are tough, we've got to admit that to one another. It's okay to have things be hard, have those hard conversations, but then at the end, like tonight, I'm going to walk away respecting the other three people that are sitting here with me. I may disagree, but I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go and, and do something negative because that's what a good leader does.
Down to Katie.
I think a school board member's role in ensuring, was it ensuring a quality education or student success? Can you just read the question again?
What is your role as a school board member to support a positive learning environment for the students of our school district?
Okay. So I kind of already answered this. It starts with making sure that our teachers feel valued. It starts with parents teaching their kids about kindness. And as a school board member, one thing that I, like I said already, kind of already answered this, is we really push that behavior. And we obviously can't change everyone, um, but we can be teaching that. And as a school board member, we have the hard conversations on how to ensure those positive learning environments exist. So anything that comes to us, I always ask myself, is this something that would positively or negatively affect my, my own kids' learning, my own kids' success in school? Heidi mentioned the AP courses. Um, I, not from Wisconsin, I'm actually from Arizona. I was in those courses and I was able to graduate at 16 and already have an associate's degree. Um, so I think that that's super important to offer programs for all students because not all kids want to go to a four-year college and that's fine, but we need to be able to make sure that we're offering those opportunities for all children, kids, adolescents.
Thank you. Dan?
The, a school board member's responsibility, I, I think it, it's, it's not necessarily a school board member's responsibility, it's a community member's responsibility. When, when the district hosted the Rachel's Challenge, uh, not sure if everybody knows about that, the, there was, it was, it was an event to, to be at their level to, I didn't go as a dad or a school board candidate. I went as a person willing to listen to their problems, listen to their concerns. Uh, the, you know, with that, there was another, uh, school, current school board member, Subloom, uh, she was there. And I was there on, I was there on Monday, I took off work, I was excited to be there. It was an amazing day with the kids, uh, a lot of crying, a lot of laughing, a lot of running around. It was, it was awesome, so awesome that I took off Thursday, I took off another day. And guess who was there again? Subloom, not as a, not as a board member, as a community member and somebody who, who cares about the kids. And just as an example, there was, there was, there was two kids there. I brought, well, I, I brought two friendship bracelets. And by the end of the event, there was two kids that walked away with a friendship bracelet. The next day at, uh, at school, I opened up the door and a girl walked out and she said, "Hey, Dan." And I said, "Hi." And I saw her walk away and she had my friendship bracelet on. It was amazing.
Thank you. All right. Those are the eight questions, like that? James, you have the lead. This is from the audience. "How knowledgeable are you of the outlined schools in the district and their communities and the needs of those students?" Nice question, thank you.
Very good question. So one thing is at a board meeting, which is nice about that, is that our principals actually come to us. They bring information, um, they share what's going on in those schools, uh, things that are going on, uh, with education that they're providing. Now, I am from Camp Douglas, am I familiar with Camp Douglas School? Very com- very comfortable with that, a middle school, a high school. Um, when we look at the other schools, outlined schools, there's still more that I'm learning about. That's why when I say that when you're doing these studies or people are talking through these buildings, I'm, what I'm doing is trying to look into those buildings a little bit further. But as far as community and understanding of community, if you take a look at what my, you know, as a family, what we do, um, we spend a lot of time in a lot of the communities that we're in. Um, family, friends, uh, you know, kids that are teammates with, with my, uh, sons. And so I have an invested interest in all of those communities. I, I'm, I'm not going to sit up here and say I know every square inch of every school. I won't do that. But what I will say is when there is an issue or there are things that we need to look a little bit more depth, in-depth, I'm going to be paying attention to that. Um, the expectations, like I said, expectations, know every corner of that. I'm, I'm not the facilities director. Uh, that person actually knows almost every section of those schools. And that's where I take a lot of advice from, hearing people like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Down to Katie. Would you like me to repeat the question? "How knowledgeable are you of the outlined schools in the district and their communities and the needs of those students?"
So my kids are the third generation to attend Warren's Elementary. Their dad attended Warren's and their grandpa attended Warren's. Um, I'm very familiar with the staff there, the principal, um, and I absolutely love that school. I would say I'm very knowledgeable about that school because I've been there so much, I go there all the time for different things. I, to be completely honest, don't know a ton about the outlined schools, but we do talk in the school board meetings about maintenance for all of the schools. They have come and presented to the school boards, school board, uh, the different buildings and what their needs are for maintenance. And that is something that we are talking about, is how to maintain those buildings. I think it's essential for the community to be able to have those, to be able to have friends that are closer when we look at those rural areas. And I, if, if all of them are like Warren's, it's a community. They have all kinds of community activities at the school and I think that's great to involve parents and it really affects the students, being able to go to outside activities and really get to know the, the staff on a, on a personal level.
Thanks. Nice concentration with the telephone ring going off.
That wasn't me. I promise.
Dan, would you like me to repeat it?
Okay. Yeah? Um, how familiar am I with outlined schools? Um, I was, I was Widel kid. Um, I'm familiar with Widel. I haven't been back to the school since 1986. Why would I? I don't have anybody there, I don't have friends there. There's, there's no point me being there as a community member. As a school board member, I would love to go back to Widel. I'd love to see, to see where they're at today. And so that is... Okay. Uh, uh, I'd love to go back. I'd love to know more. Do I know much about it right now? No. I drive by often. It made improvement, looks good. Um, most of my time has been spent in LaGrange Elementary. My father-in-law was the first principal there in 1990. My wife, uh, when she, as growing up, she wanted to be a teacher. She knows she wanted to be a teacher at LaGrange Elementary. LaGrange is my home. That's, that's where I have the most familiar area, but the, you know, Miller, every now and then I went in when my son said, uh, youth basketball there. I, I got into like the first entrance and the gym. I know what the entrance and the gym looks like, that's about it. Um, yeah, so I, I would love to know more, but do I know all of it now? Absolutely not, um, but I would love to.
Um, the outlined schools. I know that two of the outlined schools right now are top report card performers. They exceed expectations on the DPI reports. The last time that I probably also was in those outlined schools was probably between 2001 and 2002 when the limited edition show choir was practicing for a European tour, um, that we took in 2002. We performed at every elementary school in the area. I know that those schools are critical to those communities. And I also know that on that $177 million referendum, there was nothing for those outlined schools. There was no maintenance that was going to be constructed. There were, there was no plan for anything for those schools. And if we are going to put a facilities referendum forward again, I feel that the outlined schools also should be included in order to get their maintenance repairs fixed.
Okay. Thank you. No? Uh, well, yes, we're going to give our latecomer the lead on this one. I think she can handle it, she had a half a dozen in a row. This is the final question and then we'll go back and give our closing remarks and we'll begin with you, James. That's how we drew. So Katie, do you know how much infrastructure will be needed to the potential new land location and if that cost is built into proposed costs?
So with the new land, they are estimating at $2 million. That is the purchase price. The studies that have to be conducted prior to purchasing the land cost $200,000. So no matter what, we're spending $200,000 on a piece of land to even determine if we can even build on it. Um, if any of those studies come back showing that we can't build on it, then we can back out and we don't have to buy the $2 million piece of land. But it will cost us approximately $200,000 of, as pair money, just to even determine if we can build on it.
Thank you. Dan, go ahead. Danny?
Always, can you repeat the question?
"Do you know how much infrastructure will be needed to the potential new land location and if that cost is built into proposed costs?"
No, that'll answer. Uh, the, um, I haven't enough time to... Can you ask a question again?
I can. Who wrote this? I'll have you read it. "Do you know how much infrastructure will be needed to the potential new land location? Infrastructure needed and if that cost is built into proposed costs?"
I believe it was the, the land, the, the size of the land, the acreage needed, I think it was sixty-some, eight, sixty-six, sixty-seven acres and that property was just over seventy, it's like seventy-one acres. I don't know if that's infrastructure, um, or if it's utilities. I know that that property is set up with, um, the city utilities. It makes sense that, you know, that we're not building out to a piece of land that does already existing in there. Uh, I don't know the person who asked the question, I don't know if I'm answering that question, I, so I guess I'm going in a couple of different directions, but... It's a good question. Whoever asked that, could we talk afterwards? That would be great because I would like to understand that question a little bit more. Thanks.
Heidi?
Yeah, I guess like I'm, I'm going to echo both Dan and Katie. Um, it, just like Katie said, I know that the land was, um, it needs to have the studies done in order to determine if we can build on it or not. Um, I remember Kurt talking at the last meeting, um, where he was talking about things that you would have to do to the land or proposals and so forth, um, in- including getting rid of Goose Avenue, um, that splits the land right now, um, in the parcels, as well as possibly creating a new entryway, um, from Highway 16 so they would be able to access the land. I know that the owner of the land currently right now doesn't want Hollister Avenue to be used as its main thoroughway to go through there. So the school district, um, and developers would have to look at a new access point, um, in order to get to that land.
So, and Katie already talked about the price and those different things. Those are variables that are out and that's the transparency on those types of things. The things that are too potentially to our advantage and what are those? So you do have water and you do have sewer that are already in those areas. So obviously there's the hookup tying into those types of infrastructure that we already have in the area. So that could be a potential advantage to, uh, the school for a, uh, reduction of cost. The other, or even to the city. The other thing is, is talking about, everybody keeps talking about the entrance off Highway 12 and 16. Um, that entrance coming off 12 and 16, um, and I, there'll be some people in here that can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was actually, uh, developed to handle the traffic that currently is going into that location. And many of you know that there is a hospital up in that location. That intersection was developed to handle that. Now, talking about Goose and how that's going to all be handled, obviously it's going to, we're talking about a situation where we're going to have to look at if there ever was layouts or plans, what the building looks like, where it would sit, the setbacks from that. But again, there's a lot of infrastructure in that area. So when you're talking about planning and finding a site, there's a lot of things and opportunities for the, um, reduction of cost, potentially.
Thank you, James. And I believe you can hang on to the microphone.
Okay.
When we drew names, you were to begin the closing remarks. And so we'll start with you and we'll go right down the line to Katie. And then we'll have some closing moments here. Two minutes. All right?
Thank you. So first of all, again, thank you for the opportunity for, uh, the opportunity to serve you and our community and our kids. Uh, the last three years, I've learned a lot, but also been involved in some pretty amusing things that we've had an opportunity to do for our community and our kids. We talked about Warren's in those areas. What's recently been, uh, getting worked on is Wi-Fi broadband. Um, there was dollars that were brought forward to run that, uh, broadband all the way up into the Warren's area. What does that provide? Now our Warren's School District, our Warren's School, sorry, will be able to have that connectivity that is needed for, if you're utilizing iPads, security, Teams meetings and those types of things. And that awesome conjunction is rolled that out to that community as a whole. And that's a huge win. Um, the other part of, you know, serving you guys as well is the opportunity to work on what I talked about earlier, is the behavioral things. That was one of the things that I wanted to run on, was to try to support our teachers, support our community and, and to be on this board and be engaged. Um, you know, it's, you know, being a servant to our community, um, I think that's important. And I don't take what I do lightly, um, I take it very serious. And I think our future with our kids, it's, it's not just words, it's important. Otherwise, people that are in this crowd, you wouldn't be here. So come April 1st, um, you know, I'm going to look for that type of support from you and just know that I'm going to continue to work hard for our kids and work hard for our community. And, and I'm going to keep using common sense the best I can. Thank you.
The reason why I told you guys my story right away in the beginning is because I was one of six kids that had to go to an office every day at Lemon Wire in order to take riddle in. There are a lot more of me in the schools now than there has ever been before. Katie and James have touched on it, of the behavioral issues that are in the school, but those are systemic, and they're generationally systemic. If we don't do something to turn the direction around of what's happening in our schools right now, we're not going to have a workforce in years to come. Three out of 10 students in the state of Wisconsin are at reading and mathematical level for their grade, only three in 10. That's not acceptable, and I know it's not acceptable to all of the people that are sitting in this room right now. I know we can do better. I joined this campaign in order to try to turn that direction, to invest the money back into teacher salaries, into the curriculum, into raising our standards once again.
I don't tell the story often, but if I were to be elected, I would walk shoulder to shoulder, very loud and proud with Heidi on those issues. We had very similar backgrounds, but we had different choices, we had different people come alongside of us. My mom was a huge advocate, she told the district, said, "If you need my child to be on riddle in to be able to do your job, you need to get a different job," and she said, "No, he's not going to do it, the kid's got a lot of energy, he's good." That is, that's something very similar that we have, that I would, I would gladly work on with her. You know, some of the questions, you know, I, being a newcomer and a challenger, I have the privilege to say, hey, you know, the things that have been decided in the past, I was just at the board making listening and observing, I didn't get a vote. I, I didn't get the vote there, so anything that the school board has done from today backwards, it wasn't of my doing, I was a community member trying to be responsible and show up to the meetings and hear the things, you know, my role in the past couple of months has been communication with the community, not as a school board member. This is what I've been doing, I intend to come to the school board meetings, even if I don't get elected, I'm still going to be there. It has been an eye-opening experience, and I truly encourage you guys to show up to school board meetings. A lot of these concerns and questions are addressed at the meetings, and I see a lot of, a lot of things on social media where, you know, there's, people will have a question and it doesn't get answered, it gets perpetuated, and people ad lib. If you're not told the full scenario, you tend to make some of it up, and I think that's a lot of our community issue, is rumor and hearsay and misinformation, and I would like to correct that a little bit forward.
Let me just say, that's not a community issue, that's a country issue. I, just to give anyone in the background that doesn't know me, so I'm a board certified behavior analyst, I am working on my Doctor of Clinical Psychology with a specialization in Criminal Justice Studies, and my dissertation is actually in using ABA methodologies, so using behavioral interventions to reduce school dropout, and it's actually called Reducing the Prison, the Prison, the School to Prison Pipeline. So we're really looking at how we can use those behavioral interventions in schools and in parent trainings to help kids stay on track for graduation and to the future. So with that, I am a very research-based person, I taught research methods at universities, I always look at the research, I use a critical mind for the research. I do my research before I go to school board meetings, usually it's on my lunch break, if I get a lunch break or the five minutes I have in between clients, I will read the documents and look at the, the documents from the actual sources, not the documents that are shared on Facebook. And I use a critical mind to be able to, to really look at those issues. There was an issue that we, we, that was brought before us, and the attorney said one thing, and that's fine and great, but he didn't read the long, thousand-page document I did, and so I was able to turn that down, and then two months later, it got turned down countrywide anyways. So I think we need people with our full minds and willingness to tell the truth.
Thank you. I have no more questions, just one reminder, three weeks from today is April 1st, election day, three weeks from today. Thank you. Thank you, Tina, the chamber.
Again, you kind of stole my mind there. Election day is April 1st. Thank you to Toma Rotary for co-hosting this with us, Jeremy and Linda for doing the timing, Robyn for moderating, and certainly want to thank all of the candidates, both for city council and school board. Oftentimes, this is a very thankless job, and I don't know if you always know how much meetings these people sit through, and to do it with no thanks is a lot, so thank you for all being here tonight.
All right, you've just been watching the forum at the Cranbrook Country Lodge on Tuesday, March 11th. Two-part forum, the first part of the forum was all the dramatic people running for the city council in 2025, and the second part of the forum was people that are currently running for the school board in 2025, that's what you just saw here on the Hagan Sports Network. We hope you enjoyed it, we hope you were informed, and please get out and vote on Tuesday, April 1st.